I mean it's 26 and Aliyah Suturnguahan is back. We are now on item 18, the consideration of the daily file. All the engrossed bills should be in the folder in the drive. All right, we'll begin with bill number 26-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 26-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens, introduced by Jose Pito Terlahi, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, an act to add a new section 77203.1 to Article 2 of Chapter 77, Division 2, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the civilian volunteer territorial park patrol officer reserve.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. I'm good. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill number 26-36COR is passed by 15 ayes. Bill number 31-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 31-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, the Guam buildup, Hagatia revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications and Technology, and further amended on the floor, introduced by James C. Moylan, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, an act to add a new section 4101.2 to Article 1 of Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to streamlining the recruitment and hiring of law enforcement officers to be known as the SWIFT Appointments Modernization Act of 2021.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. I'm good. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill number 26-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays, and 0 excused. Bill number 26-36 is duly passed by the body. Bill number 39-36, oh, just a second.
Madam Speaker, did you say 26 when it was 31-36? Just want to make sure that the numbers are right.
I'm sorry, you're right. Did I say that? It's bill number 31-36COR.
Thank you.
We're on bill number 39 now, -36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 39-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Therese M. Terlahi, Christopher M. Duennius, Joanne Brown, Taloti Titegui, Sabina Flores Perez, an act to amend sections 61303A, 61620, 61634, and 61645 of Chapter 61, and sections 66208, 66212A, 66303, 66307, 66406A, and 66407 of Chapter 66, all of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to enforcing the terms and conditions of conditional use permits, variances, and zone changes.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. I'm good. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill number 39-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays, and 0 excused. Bill number 39-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 14-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 14-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and substituted on the floor, introduced by Joe S. Sinagustin, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, James C. Moylan, an act to add a new section 61309C4C to Article 3 of Chapter 61, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to fast-tracking Guam Land Use Commission conditional use applications for temporary workforce housing facilities during any pandemic conditions of readiness.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, nay. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, nay. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. I'm good. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Bill number 14-36COR received 10 ayes, 5 nays. Bill number 14-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 38-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 38-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Taloti Titegui, Talina Cruz Nelson, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sinagustin, Sabina Flores Perez, an act to amend section 61106B of Article 1, Chapter 61, Division 2, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing extensions of deadlines to submit reports or position statements to the Application Review Committee and an administrative fine for the director of a member agency of the Application Review Committee who fails to provide required reports or position statements on land use applications.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, pass. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. I'm good. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass, nay. Bill number 38-36COR received 12 ayes, 3 nays, 0 excused. Bill number 38-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 11-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 11-36COR, as amended by the prime sponsor and further amended on the floor, introduced by Christopher M. Duennius, V. Anthony Ada, James C. Moylan, an act to amend section 19405B and C of Article 4, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring legislative authorization to extend a declaration of a state of public health emergency and to be known as the Restoration of Separation of Powers Act.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, nay. Speaker Terlahi. I'm good. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass, nay. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Bill number 11-36COR received 8 ayes, 7 nays, and 0 excused. Bill number 11-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 13-36COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 13-36COR, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, an act to add a new Article 3A to Part 1 of Chapter 12, Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting the Nurse Licenseure Compact to add a new section 12307D of Article 3, Part 1, Chapter 12, Division 1, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing additional duties of the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners to facilitate the licensure of nurses under the compact and to appropriate the sum of $6,000 from the Health Professional Licensing Office revolving fund to the Department of Public Health and Social Services to fund the annual membership fee to the Nurse Licenseure Compact in fiscal year 2022.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, nay. Senator Duennius.
Madam Clerk, I believe that as per the actions on the floor during the Committee of the Whole have been excused from voting on this bill.
Senator Duennius has previously asked that he be excused from voting on that. I'm going to ask for a vote again now that we are here on voting. So, all in favor of excusing Senator Duennius from voting on Bill 13-36COR, please raise your hand if you are in favor of excusing him from voting. Motion carries, Senator Duennius is excused from voting. Senator Duennius, excused. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. I'm sorry. Correction. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, nay. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Aye. Speaker Terlahi, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill number 13-36COR received 10 ayes, 4 nays, 1 excused abstained. Bill number 13-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 1-36LS, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 1-36LS, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahi, V. Anthony Ada, James C. Moylan, an act to temporarily waive the payment of business license fees from October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2022, and to allow for a business license fee credit for businesses who paid their license fees prior to the enactment of this act, and to cite this act as the Business Assistance Act of 2021.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, pass. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Aye. Speaker Terlahi, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Bill number 1-36LS received 11 ayes, 4 nays, 0 excused. Bill number 1-36LS is duly passed by the body. On the nomination of Nolan G.T. Flores to serve as a member, student representative of the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Nolan G.T. Flores received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. We are now on brief extension of remarks. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized on brief extension of remarks?
Speaker Therese Terlahi, you are acknowledged for extension of remarks.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues for all the work during this session, and to, of course, the clerks and the legal office and all the staff. I just wanted to make some very brief remarks regarding, you know, what we are facing going forward. We have many big decisions in the upcoming weeks and months that will have huge implications for the people of Guam in years to come. As we've seen in the recent report, the CRER, that shows us our revenue and our expenditures, this fiscal year, we are showing, as of January 31, a potential $25.1 million shortfall in general fund revenues. Special funds are facing shortfalls, too. The Guam Highway Fund, 1.9 million short. Solid Waste Fund, shortfall of 1.1 million. The Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, $3 million shortfall. The Tourist Attraction Fund, a $3.3 million shortfall. The Healthy Futures Fund, a $1.56 million shortfall. The Customs and Quarantine Fund, 1.44 million dollars short. And these shortfalls are short on top of the over $60 million in cuts that we made to the budget of the government of Guam last year. So, I think these are quite significant, especially after those cuts that were made, that we are continuing to see additional shortfalls. And that's for our current budget. This shows that our prediction for revenue This shows that our prediction for revenues for this current fiscal year are off right now. They are below what we anticipated. We will need to ensure that despite these shortfalls, that the essential work of the government is not impacted, like the processing and paying of tax refunds on time, like ensuring our social services and programs that focus on providing a safety net for the most vulnerable continue to operate, like ensuring investigations of abuse or neglect are not set aside. There are many essential government services that must continue to be prioritized, especially ones that assist the many families and individuals struggling in poverty on this island. The executive budget request for the next fiscal year is $29 million less than this fiscal year's budget. It does not allocate any local funds for GMH. Public Health's budget, at initial glance, looks to be cut by $12 million. A few other agencies, including DOC, GDOE, GCC, UOG, are also facing cuts. Guam stands to potentially receive some federal funds. We've heard estimates of $661 million. In addition to money specifically allocated for certain programs, this $661 million, the government of Guam might be able to allocate as it sees fit. This, it is part of our work here at the Guam Legislature to examine where Guam's money should be put to best use. The Legislature must be up to date. It must have an active role in how these hundreds of millions of dollars will be spent. I'm hoping that, together with my colleagues, we will be able to focus to ensure that a bulk of this money goes to assisting families out of poverty for good. Some of our families have lived in poverty for decades. We need to provide food. It's evident from the long food lines. A place to build homes and infrastructure for those homes and for the rest of the island. So I'd just like to thank my colleagues again for all their cooperation during this session and that I look forward to continued cooperation so that we can achieve these things for our island. And I'm going to thank you again. Sidoos Masi.
Juan Pobetzul, Speaker Theresa Terlahe. Anyone else? Senator Chris Duennius, you are recognized on extension of remarks. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I want to thank my colleagues. I know that the vote on Bill 11 was a difficult vote. I just want to thank the fact that it passed. Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, it was in that spirit of the words that you shared. I read that CRER over the weekend as well. And it's very alarming. As we go forward, it is going to be extremely important that we work together. It's going to be extremely important that, as you said, Madam Speaker, whatever resources we have coming in will be spread to the greatest, the greatest deal possible to address those shortfalls and the programs that are going to need to be backfilled in order to handle what will more than likely be a continuation of difficulty within our special funds and within our general fund. It's kind of interesting how, and I have to say, looking from, you know, the shores of Guam towards the nation's capital with the new president, you know, he uses the term rescue. This is the rescue plan. This is the plan that after, during the emergency, much like what has been described by many of our colleagues and friends in the community, that during this emergency, there was that triage period, that period of stabilizing the patient, that period of moving, you know, to ensure that that emergency was dealt with. And now we're in rescue and recovery. That is a common used series of terms in emergencies, be it accidents or any other calamity. And I think it would be difficult to say that, you know, this was anything short of a calamity. But I agree with you, Madam Speaker, and I pray that somehow, some way, this bill can be signed into law. And I pray that what it really means is that we're going to get down to the people's work. That we're going to be diligent. I remember many of our colleagues here on the floor during the campaign, there was no question that the discussion was we're going to spend this next two years really deliberating heavily in this body to do absolutely everything that we can to ensure stability, to take care of our people, and to work our way out of this current pandemic and put Guam, along with the nation, back on its feet again, moving forward. And so, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to follow on with your comments and say that that's what I believe this body wants to do. I certainly want to do that. And in that spirit of ineffable, in that spirit of trying to do everything that we can to be part of the solution. And that's why I wanted to extend some remarks. There are many bills coming up as well, Madam Speaker, that are going to make proposals on, you know, salary adjustments, are going to make proposals on lots of things going forward. So all of this stuff is going to have to be balanced. But I just think that this body needs to play a role. So once again, Sidoos Masi, and I will continue to, you know, to pray and to hope. But I will continue to work with you and every single member on this floor to do whatever we can in the coming days, weeks, months, and into the balance of this term. Sidoos Masi, talu, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to just share a few words.
Sidoos Masi, Senator. Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized for extension of remarks? If not, we are moving on to announcements. I just have one, that is that the State of the Island Address will be on March 8, 6:30 p.m. All right, you will see a call to session, a formal call will be made. All right. Majority Leader, you are now recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn session subject to the call of the speaker. Thank you.
On the motion to adjourn subject to the call of the speaker, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, motion carries. We are adjourned, subject to the call of the speaker.